To tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council on May 3, 2016. Delighted to have you here. At this time, I ask you to please silence all electronic devices. And for tonight's invocation, we turn to Councilmember Kathy Hikes.
Let us pray. Lord, you showed us some of your unbounded complexity in the mixture of rain and sunshine today. We are ever grateful for a portion of both, and we are especially grateful for the clean water you bestow upon us. We will continue to use it wisely and well. We ask your blessing on the residents of this city and the constituents we serve. We ask for the end of violence in our neighborhoods and solutions for the despair and frustration that give rise to it. We thank you for those whose work and passion sustains this city in which we live. We are thankful for those who day and night maintain our public services and others whose selfless efforts provide services to our poor, the sick, and the needy. Bless our children and families and our elderly. Bless our mayor and council members so that our discussions and decisions may enhance the well-being of everyone in our community. Bless all city employees at this time of year when we reflect on all that they have done. Teach us to remember that all our lives depend upon the work of many minds and hands, that we may live thankfully and in unity as members of one human family. Amen.
We have a couple proclamations this evening. We'll begin by recognizing Water Resource Director Bob Patterson.
Mayor Baltutis and council, thank you very much for this time to appear before you to recognize National Drinking Water Week, which has started May 1 through May 7, and for recognizing the many city employees who help provide water to our community. Burlington's been fortunate to have leadership that has committed to developing and maintaining our three water supply lakes, Stony Creek Lake, also known as City Lake, Lake Kamak, and Lake McIntosh, which have a combined capacity of 29 trillion gallons of water, and also our two water treatment plants, the J.D. McIntosh Water Treatment Plant and the Ed Thomas Water Treatment Plant, which together has a capacity to treat up to 32 million gallons of water per day. We currently serve our 50,000-plus city residents, as well as being a regional water provider to the towns of Hall River, Gibsonville, Elon, Witsit, the Village of Alamance, the City of Greensboro, and soon the town of Osiphe. In 2015, our plant operators produced about 3.8 billion gallons of treated drinking water, an average of about 10 and 1/2 million gallons per day. That's a big change from the city's first public well that was dug in 1888. Finished waters pumped throughout our -- from our water treatment plants throughout our city through a distribution of pipes underground, a distribution system that has over 420 miles of pipes that provides water service to our customers' homes and businesses. For context, it's roughly 435 miles from here to Philadelphia, so if you laid our pipes end to end, it's almost to Philadelphia following the road network. It would reach Columbus, Ohio. Throughout the day, dozens of tests are run at the plant by our certified operators, our Laboratory Services Division, and commercial labs for aesthetic quality control and regulatory purposes. The Water and Sewer Pipe Maintenance Division maintains our distribution system and responds to calls to investigate and repair leaks around the clock, often in adverse weather conditions. The Plant Maintenance Division maintains our pumps and our equipment at the treatment plants and also our pump stations to feed the distribution system. And there's many employees in other city departments. I don't think there's a single department in the city that doesn't help us do our job to help provide water to our citizens' homes and our schools and our businesses and industries. Our staff is knowledgeable and well-trained and works diligently every day to provide high-quality water to our customers. And as part of the city's recognition of Drinking Water Week, the city will be taking part in a ceremony on Thursday, May 5, at 10:00, in the town of Osiphe to celebrate the partnership that we have with the town to provide them drinking water. We just recently completed a water line along Highway 87 that will be put into service, and I'd like to invite you all to attend that ceremony. It will be again Thursday at 10:00. We also have representatives from the Osiphe Town Council, special guest Seth Robertson from the State Revolving Fund, who, with the Department of Environmental Quality, provided the funding for the project. Now, it'll be 10:00 a.m. at the Altima Osiphe Fire Station Number 2.
My honor, to present this proclamation proclaiming May 1 through 7, 2016, as National Drinking Water Week, in the city of Burlington. Whereas our city is -- whereas water is our most valuable resource, and whereas only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy, and whereas any measure of a successful society, low mortality rates, economic growth and diversity, productivity, and public safety are in some way related to access to safe water, and whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which future generations depend, and whereas each citizen in the city of Burlington is called upon to help protect our social waters from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to get involved in local water issues by even knowing their water. Now, therefore, be it resolved that by the virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Burlington, I do hereby proclaim May 1 through 7, 2016, as Drinking Water Week in the city of Burlington, and commend this observance to our citizens. Thank you.
This time, council recognizes Police Chief.
Mayor and council, on behalf of the 127 sworn police officers here in Burlington, I want to thank you for taking a brief moment tonight to recognize Police Week. Burlington has been blessed in only losing one police officer in the entirety of our years of service, and that was Sonny Vaughn, who was killed December 7, 1938, intervening in a burglary here in town. I think that we are very well situated to not have another police officer killed in the line of duty. We have substantial support from you all in the form of equipment and training and support, and that allows us to be very safe in the things that we do every single day protecting our community. So we thank you for that. And in recognition of Police Week, all of the police departments in the county will be celebrating a fallen officer memorial. That's going to be Thursday, the 19th, at 11:00 a.m. in Graham. I invite you all to come and join us during that fairly brief ceremony where the names of the seven, now eight, law enforcement officers in the county, we hang a picture and say some words. So at that ceremony, you're welcome to join us. That's at the memorial, which is located beside the Children's Museum in Graham, 11:00 on the 19th. So anyone is welcome to attend that event. So thank you for this honor.
So it's now my honor to present this proclamation proclaiming May 12 through 21st, 2016, as National Police Week. To recognize National Police Week, 2016, and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are approximately 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the 127 dedicated members of the Burlington Police Department, and whereas nearly 50,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are recorded each year, resulting in approximately 15,000 injuries, and whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including 128 officers who died in 2015 and the 32 that have been killed thus far in 2016, and whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C., and whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 28th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13, 2016, and whereas the candlelight vigil is part of the National Police Week, which takes place this year on May 12 through 21st, and whereas May 15 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day and honor all fallen officers and their families in U.S. Fire, who be flown at half-stops. Therefore, may it be resolved that I, Ian Baltutis, Mayor of the city of Burlington, formally designate May 12 through 21st, 2016, as Police Week in the city of Burlington, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community, main communities across the nation.
At this time, council recognizes.
Good evening, everybody. Praise the Lord. Good to be here. I'm really thankful that we are celebrating 10 years of National Day of Prayer locally in our local congregation, and we've had many of you come and spend that time with us, and it's been very wonderful. The Bible says that the nation -- blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord, and that is true for the city and the county and the individual who knows their Lord. And so we're thankful that we have time to do that, that our nation is giving time for that. And we are having an event again this year. It is going to be Thursday. It is always the first Thursday of every May, so you may always mark your calendar. It is at 12:30. And what's really nice about this event is that we really try to incorporate our young people with it. Our young people need to know that cities and counties aren't run just by themselves. They take leadership and takes wisdom, takes godly wisdom, and they need to pray for you folks and for the other folks that run our county and our police department and our fire department and everything, that they have to realize that that's an important role. And so we're excited that we don't just pray that day, but we have prayer partners that pray one for another the entire year, and that's a special thing. And it has been a special thing through the last 10 years. And so everyone is welcome. Anybody can come, and we're very, very excited to do it again this year and appreciate your acknowledging it for the city.
I present this proclamation proclaiming National Day of Prayer on May 5, 2016, whereas civic prayers and national days of prayer have a long and venerable history in our constitutional republic, dating back to the first continental independence in 1775. And whereas the Declaration of Independence, our first statement of America's -- a statement as Americans of national purpose and a heavy made the law of nature, to nature's God, the foundation of our United States of America, and asserted that people have the inalienable rights that are God-given, and whereas the Supreme Court has affirmed the right of state legislators to open their sessions with prayer, and the Supreme Court and the United States Congress themselves began to begin each day with prayer. And whereas the 1988 legislation setting aside the first Thursday in May of each year as National Day of Prayer was passed unanimously by both houses of Congress and signed by President Ronald Reagan, and whereas the National Day of Prayer is an opportunity for Americans of all faiths to join in united prayer to acknowledge our dependence on God, to give thanks for blessings received, and to request healing for wounds and dirt, and to ask God to guide our leaders and bring holiness to the United States and our citizens. And whereas it is fitting and proper to give thanks to God by observing a day of prayer in the city of Burlington, let all may acknowledge our blessings and express gratitude for them, while recognizing the need for strengthening religious and moral values in our states and nations. Whereas the 65th Annual National Day of Prayer will take place on Thursday, May 5, 2016, where millions will unite in prayer at thousands of events from coast to coast, and whereas the theme for 2016 is Wake Up America. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Ian Baltutis, Mayor of the city of Burlington, North Carolina, hereby proclaim Thursday, May 5, 2016, to be designated as the Day of Prayer in the city of Burlington, and encourage the citizens of Burlington to observe the day in ways appropriate to its importance and significance. Thank you.
At this time, council recognizes City Clerk Renee Ward.
Members of council, it's my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest in matters that are of course asked with theory and potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda.
None.
This time, we move to the approval of minutes from April 4, 2016, as well as April 19, 2016. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. I move that we approve the minutes.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. This time, we have two add-ons to our consent agenda. Item C, Chuhuli Venetians Art Exhibit, and item D, 211 Services Burlington. Do I hear a motion to approve these add-ons?
A move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. This time, we have the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt our agenda, including these add-ons?
Make a motion that we adopt the agenda with the add-ons.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. Next item is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. To set a date of public hearing for May 17, 2016, to receive public comments on a contiguous annexation for property located at University Drive and South Church Street. Item B, to adopt a resolution of intent annex municipal-owned property and set a date of public hearing for May 17, 2016, to consider the annexation located on Stone Quarry Road. Item C, to support the Alamance County Arts Council in the amount of $5,000 for the Chuhuli Venetians Art Exhibit to be held July 1, 2016, through October 15, 2016, at the Captain James and Emma Holt White House in Graham, North Carolina. Item D, to support the United Way of Alamance County in the amount of $5,000 for the 211 Services in Burlington to connect citizens with the important priority needs of people in crisis. Do I have a motion regarding the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. This time, we have a public hearing. Item 1 on the public hearing. A public hearing has been set to consider adopting an ordinance and approving Budget Amendment 2016-31 in the amount of $36,640 for the demolition of 646, 648, 650, 652, and 654 West Webb Avenue. Details are spelled out in your agenda. At this time, the council recognizes Director of Development and Technical Services Nolan Kirkman.
Thank you, Mayor and council. At the April Work Session, you will recall that staff reviewed this commercial demolition -- excuse me, demolition case with council. The property is located at 650 West Webb. It's located at the corner of Platte Street and West Webb Avenue. As a quick recap, the property was condemned as unsafe by the inspections Director due to structural and environmental issues, and that led to an order to repair or demolish being issued. Since the order was not complied with, and the owner and parties of interest have been non-responsive, staff is recommending a municipal demolition of the structure. As you recall, the property had a negative appraisal value. The following public hearing, following that, staff is requesting approval of the demolition ordinance, as well as the associated budget amendment. If approved, it should take about two months to complete the demolition. So we're available to answer any questions you may have.
Do any questions from council?
I'll make that corner look better.
I think so.
This is a public hearing. If anyone on the right side of the room would like to speak? If anyone to my left would like to speak? All right. Do I have a motion to close public hearing?
Make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Public hearing is closed.
Do we adopt the demolition ordinance?
Motion.
Second.
Seconded? Motion is to adopt the demolition ordinance. Any discussion?
Mayor, move we make a motion that we approve the Budget Amendment 2016-31.
Second.
Okay. So new motion is including the Budget Amendment 2016-31. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Do we need to vote on both of those items? Okay. Include those together. All right. So that moves us to new business, item 2. City council will consider approving 2016-17 One-Year Action Plan for the Community Development Program. This time, council recognizes Community Development Administrator Shawna Tillery.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, we're just asking for approval of the 2016 CDPG and Home Action Plan to HUD. It will be submitted next week through the city of Greensboro, since we're a consortium member there. It is good to note that there was a slight change in the home allocation. We received notification last week. It was about a couple of thousand-dollar difference. They had reported to us the wrong numbers, so we made the adjustment in our budget.
Was it up or down?
Down. It's like $2,000. There was some wrong calculations from HUD, so we made the adjustments. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Questions from council?
I make a motion that we approve the 2016-2017 One-Year Action Plan of the Community Development Program.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Items 3. City council will consider approving Link Transit fare-free service period from June 6, 2016, until June 30, 2016. This time, council recognizes Director of Transportation Mike Nun.
Mayor and council, thank you for considering this item. We're quickly approaching our June 6 start-up date for Link Transit. The Public Transit Advisory Committee looked over this recommendation, trying to find the best way to encourage ridership. It's something brand-new, as we all know. We talked to some partner communities in the state, and anytime they start a new system or a new route or expansion, typically do this kind of incentive to get people to try it without worrying about a fare card or cash or coin to start. So it's something the commission brings to you, suggesting the month of June, which was take us from June 6 to the end of June fare-free, meaning no fare at all. Get on, ride the bus, enjoy it, try it out, and then July 1, which is a Friday, I believe, would be the first day of fares for Link Transit. So that's the recommendation from the commission to you. I'm not going to answer any questions that you have.
Questions from council? This has generally been seen as a good way to kind of boost that initial ridership and get folks aware of the system?
Yes. Encouraging people to ride and, like I said, not worrying about, you know, the fare and all that. Be able to educate as well during that first period.
Excellent. And can you remind folks where they can purchase fare cards?
We'll have them at the annex here in Burlington. We'll have them at Burlington Town Hall. We'll also have -- excuse me, Gibsonville Town Hall. We'll have them at Alamance Community College, and we're also working with Alamance County administrative offices to be able to provide them there.
Excellent. Any other questions?
I'd make a motion that we approve the Link Transit fare-free service period from June 6 through the end of the month.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the fare period, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item 4. City council will consider awarding a contract in the amount of $915,098.39 to Riley Paving Inc. for 2016 street resurfacing projects. This time, council recognizes Senior Civil Engineer David Bowman.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. You probably won't be able to read the map real clearly, since it's a map of the whole city, but if there's anything that needs to be zoomed in on, we can. Engineering Department received bids for the resurfacing project on March 31 for this year's resurfacing. We had the low bidder of Riley Paving. They did the paving under the last contract, and staff was satisfied that they did a good job. So we recommend that they're awarded a contract for this year's resurfacing as well. Their price was $915,098.39.
Any questions regarding the map or project?
What will be the total area that will be resurfacing?
It'll be about 5.2 linear miles.
And that's just a continuation of our resurfacing plan that we already have in existence?
Are we going to have to set these streets in a priority method to start?
The priority was set, we had a consultant evaluate all the streets in the city, and they assigned a pavement condition rating to each street, and pretty much they started on the low end of the ratings and worked our way up till we ran out of money.
Yes. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Do I hear a motion regarding the project?
We approve the contract to Riley Paving for $915,000 plus.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the contract, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. You didn't have anyone sign up for public comment period, so this moves us to city council comments. I'd like to remind everyone that our next meeting of the Burlington City Council will be held May 17, 2016, at 7:00 p.m. Same place. As Bob Patterson mentioned, on Thursday, May 5, we'll be having a special ceremony for the link of our water systems between Burlington and the town of Osiphe. That'll be at 10:00 a.m. over at the Altima Osiphe Fire Station Number 2 Meeting Room. We encourage folks to come. Hopefully, the weather cooperates. For those interested in summer camp opportunities in the city, we have an open house May 6 from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. over at Fairchild Park. And then this weekend is an exciting event in downtown. We have the Active City Streets Festival from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on Saturday, and then we also have a food truck rodeo on Sunday. So check out downtown. I think the weather is going to cooperate with us there. Any other comments from council?
Yeah, I have one, Mayor. Since this is National Drinking Water Week, and we all have a glass of Burlington's finest up here, that we raise our glass to our Water Resources Department, to our Police Department, National Day of Prayer.
Any other comments from council? Manager Harden has a couple items.
Just a couple clarifications from last night's budget presentation to clarify a couple of facts that were stated incorrectly. Regarding the -- in my presentation last night regarding the Police Department, the A-NIT investigator position, which is the Alamance Narcotics Enforcement Team, that investigator position is a civilian position. Last night, I incorrectly said it was a sworn position. And in Water Resources for the Capital Project item regarding switching from chlorine gas to liquid bleach, liquid chlorine or bleach at the McIntosh Plant, this year's budget will be a $200,000 item to begin the conversion process. And I incorrectly said last night, we would actually start the work. We'll get the plant. We'll get the plans, and then we'll come back to you for a budget amendment sometime during the fiscal year with a number on the actual work, but it was only the money in for the -- to begin the conversion process. So sorry about the incorrect information. If you may have questions, let us know.
Any questions regarding this? All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thanks.